Welcome to the Wednesday, January 6, 2022, hybrid meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a citizens advisory commission to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners, who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. Public comment is allowed on those topics for which public hearings have not been held. My name's Eric Casino, I'm this season's chair of the Planning Commission. I represent District Two, and we are going to introduce everybody else. We'll start down here with Commissioner Hanson.
Christian Joel Hanson, District Three.
Jim Simmons, District Three.
Derek Day, District One.
Barry Halverson, District Two.
Scott Nelson, District Three.
Commissioner Pessinger on Zoom.
Devin Pessinger, District One.
Commissioner Carmen.
And Commissioner Doug Carmen, District Two.
Thank you all for attending tonight. With that, has everybody had a chance to look over the evening's agenda? If so, we entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes and accept the audio.
No, agenda. Working on the agenda tonight.
Make a motion to accept the agenda.
Second.
The motion to accept the agenda has been made and seconded. Call for the vote.
Commissioner Casino.
Hi.
Commissioner Day.
Hi.
Commissioner Halverson.
Hi.
Mr. Hanson.
Hi.
Mr. Carmen.
Hi.
Mr. Nelson.
Hi.
Mr. Pessinger.
Hi.
Mr. Simmons.
Hi.
Is that all right?
Who else?
The motion passes. Okay, with that, we will move on to the meeting minutes. Has everybody had a chance to look over the meeting minutes? And as such, an entertaining motion.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes, accept the audio as official meeting record for June 2022.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes and accept the audio as the official meeting record has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Very none, call for the vote.
Mr. Casino.
Hi.
Mr. Day.
Hi.
Mr. Halverson.
Hi.
Mr. Hanson.
Hi.
Mr. Carmen. Mr. Nelson.
Hi.
Mr. Pessinger.
Hi.
Mr. Simmons.
Hi.
Minutes have been accepted, thank you very much. With that, we are going to move on to the public comment section of our meeting, and I don't see anybody in the courtroom to address in person. Is there anybody online tonight? Yeah, let's wait for Chris. And just in time for public comment. If there's anybody in the galley that would like to speak, now would be a great time. Well, hearing nobody here for public comment, we will move on to item four, which is new business, which is a work session on docket item A24, emergency housing ordinance, with planner Leah Davis.
Good evening, commissioners. I am Leah Davis, an associate planner with community planning. You may remember that in November, Maya and I provided a short informational work session on this docket item to introduce it, but we have several new commissioners, so we'd like to review some of that information tonight. We're not asking for any decisions. At the next meeting on July 20th, we anticipate bringing forward the code language of the ordinance. So Maya, T., senior planner, so present us together. Next slide, please. So the emergency housing ordinance, as you said, is item A24 on the docket. It allows for some permitting criteria flexibility when permitting homeless encampments. It will affect four sections of the code, the rural county and all three north county urban growth areas. In the next 30 minutes, we will cover the history of the homeless encampments ordinance, the history and purpose of the emergency housing ordinance. We will also cover what other local jurisdictions are doing, and we will review related policies. Next. The emergency housing ordinance is one tool of many. It will not solve homelessness or eliminate any unpermitted homeless encampments. It will not create or establish any camps. It merely allows the director of CPED to waive some requirements by request and also allows the permitting process to move more quickly due to the emergency nature of the public health crisis. Next. The homeless encampment ordinance, number 14402, was first adopted in 2010. The Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended adoption. The county commissioners held a second public hearing prior to adoption in April 2010. The ordinance applies to titles 20, 21, 22, and 23, which are the rural county zoning ordinance and the zoning ordinances of the urban growth areas of Lacey, Tomwater, and Olympia. The county has never permitted a homeless encampment. The county received its first application late last year, but it was withdrawn before it was permitted. Next.
Part one.
Yes, on the carpet.
Carpet.
So the original regulations were adopted in part to implement the changes in the comprehensive plan of their plans in Thurston County. It is important to note that state law requires us to have provisions to regulate homeless encampments. Next. The ordinance, this is the homeless encampments ordinance that exists on the books. It provides standards to ensure temporary homeless encampments can be accommodated while maintaining minimum health and safety standards. Encampments are a temporary use and can be permitted for up to 180 days. The ordinance limits the number of residents, regulates onsite activities, requires a security plan, and must have a host or sponsoring agency. Schools in the district of a permitted encampment must be notified at the time of application. Next.
Restriction as to how close they can be to schools.
I, it's not fresh in my mind. We'll cover that next meeting, though. We'll bring the ordinance and things that it does and doesn't do. So in June of 2018, the Board of Health declared homelessness a public health crisis. About a year later, the county commissioners adopted the interim emergency housing ordinance, allowing the CPED director to waive some specific requirements in order to help provide a rapid permitting response. The interim emergency housing ordinance was renewed five more times, most recently last month. Two of the interim ordinance renewals included changes. One was to waive the restriction of heating and cooking devices in RVs, and one would require the director to consult with stakeholders prior to waiving any regulations. Other than that, no amendments have been made to the homeless encampment chapter since its adoption. Interim regulations expire after six months, so must be repeatedly renewed. The current regulations will expire December, if not renewed. Next. Interim regulations allow for a waiver of some requirements not related to public health and safety. Renewal of interim regulations every six months requires staff time and a public hearing by the county commissioners, which is one reason that the commissioners want to adopt a permanent version of the emergency housing ordinance. Next. Interim.
Would you approve the extension?
That would be done through, at this point, that would be done through a public hearing with the Board of County Commissioners.
So the Board of County Commissioners approves it after a public hearing?
Yes. The interim regulations allow the director to waive specific requirements upon request of the applicant. No regulation is waived outright. So an example of that might be that a sponsoring agency submits a permit application to Thurston County to host a homeless encampment, maybe RVs, maybe tents, maybe whatever. They can meet all regulations with the exception, say, of meeting the parking requirements. So they would request the CPED director to waive that one requirement, and they'd still be required to meet all other requirements. Or perhaps they would say it's a perfect site, except that it's more than a quarter mile from a bus stop. Can we waive that requirement? So it's things like that that aren't directly related to public health and safety. So there are, next slide, please. There are many similarities in regulations between Thurston County and the other jurisdictions within the county. We have similar site and security requirements, similar application requirements, the same limit on the number of residents, and similar requirements for public information meetings. Tomwater and DC both had allowed camp permits for up to 180 days and offered no waivers in the event of an emergency. Olympia allows for a 365-day permit with two one-year extensions, and they also allow potential waivers in a public health emergency. Next. So the 2019 comprehensive plan update identified an increase in homeless families as a critical issue. Most of the goals and policies in the comp plan are at increasing affordable housing. However, there are two policies in Chapter Four that support this proposed amendment to encourage programs, including construction and operation of emergency housing, and to support the Thurston County homeless housing five-year plan goals and actions list. Maya.
Yes, good evening, commissioners. So I just want to talk a little bit about what our schedule looks like for this proposed amendment. As Leah mentioned, we are planning on bringing the proposed code language back to you at the next work session on July 20. We are hoping that after a discussion at that work session, we can go forth and set a public hearing and hear what citizens have to say. And then we've reserved some time in September to have some follow-up work sessions and discussions before the Planning Commission arrives at a possible recommendation. We are hoping to move this through in order to have the board take a final action before the current interim ordinance expires. So as Leah mentioned, the interim regulations that are currently in place need to be renewed every six months. That does require staff time. We have to put up a public hearing with the board in order to renew those regulations. So we are aiming to have the board take a final action on the proposed amendments before that expires. But of course, if the commission decides that more time is needed, we're happy to accommodate that. And that concludes our presentation for tonight, so we are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Down with Commissioner Halverson.
Two questions. What has goal two, objective B, policy two accomplished? That being the county should encourage social housing and health services organizations which offer support for programs, et cetera. What has actually been accomplished with that?
Well, Mike, you wanted to address that.
Yeah, I would have to reach out to public health and social services, but a lot of the policy language in our housing chapter, and specifically this policy, is to support some of the programs that are ongoing and new within our PHSS department in the county. They do have a number of programs to help folks seek out funding that are in need to coordinate low-income housing and searches like that. I believe they have a list for folks who need entry points into low-income housing or are on the brink of homelessness. So there are a lot of ongoing systems, most of them are within PHSS, and that's certainly something we could bring back to the Planning Commission if you're interested on what kind of programs have been worked on since the last periodic update.
Well, one of the things that concerns me is the goals and policies rank at alleviating cost burden and increasing affordable housing. So my question would be, in the last couple of years since 2019, when this update was adopted, how many additional affordable housing units have been created? And what other initiatives have actually accomplished something?
Well, this particular ordinance that we're reviewing today doesn't address affordable housing. Affordable housing is addressed in a comp plan, but these two goals and policies are specific to supporting services for people who don't have homes.
Okay.
And so, as Maya said, Public Health and Social Services runs programs that refers people to services that they need. I talked with our PHSS homeless liaison, and they have a pretty big budget, especially COVID money in the last couple of years. And they do provide resources and do a lot of outreach to homeless people to try to connect them with homes and places to stay, usually emergency housing.
But my question still is, I would like to know, since 2019, how many affordable housing units have been built in Thurston County? And what other instruments have been instituted that have actually led to accomplishment of some of these goals since 2019? Because that goes right to your homeless problem.
Well, I know.
Okay, because my experience in Thurston County has been that our housing costs are going up. Less affordable housing is actually being built because it costs too much to build it for people to be able to even rent it. I mean, I had several homes in this county for years as rentals, and I got to the point where I had to sell my rentals because I could not afford to keep them and keep my costs down, where people could actually afford to rent them because of property taxes and other things. So I'd really be interested to know those particular metrics. The other question is, I don't know how you're going to get this before a public hearing to the commissioners before the end of September. Our public hearing is scheduled for August 17, and then a work session on September 7. And it takes a minimum, I believe, three weeks after you do our public hearing and work session to get a public hearing on the BOCC work calendar.
Right. Commissioner, we would be aiming for a board public hearing by December. Just the September timeline is for the Planning Commission's review.
Okay, so you're going to have to extend it again regardless, because it ends in September.
No, it ends December 9.
December 9, okay, I got that wrong, thank you. Commissioner Pessinger?
Thank you, Chair. I share a number of Commissioner Halverson's concerns, but have a number of other concerns as well. My first question would be about the concept of moving to what I think was referred to as a permanent emergency, and that just seems wrong, like it seems like literally a conflict of definition of terms, sort of like jumbo shrimp. It just doesn't make sense. And I wonder where we stand in terms of this. I mean, we know this is an issue, we know this is an issue that's getting worse. It's not likely to get fixed in the next month or year or two. So it is definitely an ongoing, long-term issue that we need to work at. But I'm concerned about making it a permanent emergency. Wouldn't we be better suited writing ordinances that are designed for the long term? Another question, concern, go ahead.
I was going to touch on that question, but I'll let you go ahead and ask your second question if you'd like to first.
Okay. So more concerns come from, you know, I think, A, this, from your description, that no particular encampment has yet applied or won applied and withdrew. So in the entire three years of this emergency operation, it has provided any different services to exactly zero by that measure. We know there's a huge number of people who are homeless in the county. We know that most of the population is in Olympia, but a fair amount of the population is in Lacey and Tomwater, and even some in Yell. But there has to be some encampments that exist within the county that are just simply unregulated and have never applied and are maybe not in a position to apply. But I wonder where we can offer any assistance in that area. I've, just as a couple examples would be, you know, the immediate concerns that were raised with the previous thing had to do with camping and cooking equipment and obviously fire dangers. Obviously, the fire departments are concerned about the dangers of the fires that are at these encampments. But there's got to be other concerns that we ought to be addressing as well, which include a huge amount of abuse of the people who live there. These people, homeless people are often being preyed upon by gangs and drug dealers and other things. We have concerns about police and their ability to even feel safe and working with areas where there's a large amount of homeless people who have mental health issues. Are there any other concerns above and beyond the, just the fire and the cooking equipment that we could possibly help address? And then, sort of associated with that, I'm curious, you know, as these have been renewed multiple times by the Board of County Commissioners, can you, before our public hearing, can you tell us anything now about what has been some of the public comment that we have not yet been able to address with this?
Yes, so I'll take a stab at answering those two questions. I want to start with the concerns about this being a permanent emergency. So that is not what this ordinance or the proposed amendments do. The emergency or declared public health crisis is a resolution that is adopted by the Board of Health or Board of County Commissioners. The proposed amendments under this ordinance would just allow for a waiver of certain regulating criteria, permit criteria, under a declared health crisis or emergency. So it's twofold. The board first has to declare a public health crisis or emergency. And yes, they have done that, I believe 2018 was when that was first declared. It has not been rescinded, but the board could rescind that at any time if they deem that that's not an issue anymore. So we're not outright allowing permanent exemptions forever in the future. This is something that would be applicable in a declared emergency by the Board of County Commissioners. And it's really a pathway for permitting, for quick permitting, when we have an emergency like that.
The permanent is just to, so we don't have to renew it every six months to meet the commissioners' desire to have this in place. It just means that we'll adopt it permanently, and it will only apply during a public health crisis.
Knowing that there's a lot of overlap between the interim ordinance and this proposed permanent ordinance, would it be possible to make the public comments on the interim ordinance that were brought forward up until the BOCC public hearing on it on May 24?
There have not been that.
Can we make those available?
Yes.
I saw they weren't on the website anymore.
Yeah.
So if those could be published, that would be great.
Okay.
Commissioner Carmen, it looked like you had something that you wanted to add.
Yes, I'd like to add to Commissioner Halverson's comments in that we had asked the last time this was presented, you have, and I thought that would be happening at this meeting, to have a report on those goals and things that the housing authority has accomplished and what they're trying to do with these things. Because we are concerned about it working, not just providing something. And seeing as how there has not been any permitted homeless camps so far, theoretically, I'm assuming there's not going to be any, but because most of them are unpermitted. And we all seem to have concerns about what are we doing for the homeless. And perhaps some background in that would help us to move forward.
If I recall, the commissioners, at the end of last year, created a tax that would create a funding stream for affordable housing, expecting to raise somewhere in the neighborhood of $50 million over the next 10 years. That's my memory, and it may not be perfect information.
That's what I remember, too.
Yeah, and so they are working toward making more affordable housing. The problem is we don't have policies in place, often they're land use policies, or good grant funding for affordable housing. And you can't force people to build affordable housing who want to build market rate housing. So it gets to be very complicated, but the commissioners have created a funding stream for affordable housing. It will just take a while to build it.
I do want to refocus this discussion a little bit. Because this discussion is not so much about how are we going to solve the homeless crisis in Thurston County. It's very specific to this particular ordinance. And so if we could kind of keep it more on that, we can worry about homelessness in general or at another time. But with the timelines that are on the interim ordinance expiring and the large desire from the BOCC to have a permanent ordinance, I think that we should worry about what's in particular. Commissioner Hanson, you had something?
Yeah, my question or thing that I pulled out as well is very similar in that in the time that this ordinance has been in effect during the emergency, that there hasn't been any camps permitted under the ordinance. And so my question to you as the experts is, what could we be doing differently? What language could we be putting into this ordinance that might accomplish moving the ball down the field a little bit?
Well, I think that the waivers may help because the regulations are regulations, and it makes it difficult to permit. And so having some waivers on some non-public health safety issues to make a camp more permissible, I think would help.
If I may chime in, that was also a concern that we heard from Commissioner Mensah back during renewal of one of the interim ordinances in, I think it was last year in 2021, during the June 2021 renewal. They asked, we haven't seen a application for this, how can we improve this ordinance? And so you will see in the code amendments that we bring before you at the next meeting, there are some that are beyond what is currently in place under the interim regulations. And a lot of those changes are in an effort to make this ordinance work a little bit better. How can we improve the permitting process? How can we help clarify certain things within the code and make this more transparent for applicants or host agencies that are interested in applying? And so you will see there are some changes beyond the interim language. But as Commissioner Casino has mentioned, this is fairly narrow in scope. It's not intended to solve all the problems, it's not an affordable housing program. There are a lot of other ongoing and existing programs in place, but this is a very small tool that's aimed at helping folks get through the permitting process if they're interested in serving as a host agency for a temporary homeless encampment.
Would this tool, as you say, provide a place to include incentives or other types beyond just permitting changes? Or would that be something in addition to this ordinance?
That would be separate from this. This is really just about permitting.
Okay, Commissioner Day.
Yeah, so fully recognizing that's a Band-Aid solution, we are trying to keep that in the toolbox. I want to kind of reiterate some of Commissioner Pessinger's comments, like are there things in this ordinance possibly that we could, you know, make better for people who live in these encampments? So along the lines of the, like the heating and cooking, are there other things? I think that is, that is really pretty important to see if there are opportunities to make further exemptions. And then second, my question would be, like, has staff reached out and talked to any of the host or sponsoring organizations to see what those barriers might be that we might be able to knock down?
Well, I would address the second one first. Because we did get an application in last, late last year. We did, when you write code, and you don't know how it's going to work until someone submits an application. And we found some flaws in the existing code that made, that were obstacles to getting something permitted. And so part of the revisions that we're bringing forth at the next meeting will show all of the things that we made to make that permitting process easier. That was one thing.
I had a couple of specific questions that I know that you can't give an answer now, but bring back because there'll be questions we'll have later. And the first one is, when it comes to the requirements that can be waived, one of those requirements is a public informational meeting. I have a really hard time with cutting the public out of any kind of thing like this. And so I would like to probably be convinced why that's a good idea. Because right now I can't see why it would be a good idea to cut out public information meetings. The other question that I would have specific to this is the definition of a host or an agency. That seems like it could be a little limiting. I know the idea is that government. Uh, that seems like it could be a little limiting. I know the idea is that government agency or a non-government agency or a church or somebody like that can apply for one of these permits. But why couldn't I, just a single guy that's got five acres somewhere apply to do something like this, or could he? And I don't know what the answer to that is, but I think if somebody would want to volunteer their resources to help out the public, that would be one of the barriers that we would want to eliminate. So somebody could volunteer to help out the public in such way. Especially if everything else is done like public information meetings and that kind of thing.
Right.
Especially if we're going to give the power to the director who, I'm glad that we have a great director for C P E D. But if he has this much power, but is not really accountable directly to the voters like the Board of County Commissioners is, I'd like to have some pretty definitive uh sidelines on this.
Well, as I stated in presentation, and you'll hear more about it at the next meeting. Um, the director is required to have a meeting with stakeholders prior to waiving any regulations. So stakeholders are the citizens of Thurston County.
Okay.
Too. So maybe business owners, citizens, and anyone who is interested in this issue would be a stakeholder.
And and I understand that.
Yeah.
The whole idea is it's it's emergency, so you want it to be fast acting because you want it to be, even though we haven't utilized it yet, we'd like it to be utilized more. But um, I don't know if there can be some kind of noticing for property owners within so many feet or something like that, but something where it doesn't catch people off guard and gives people an opportunity to um address their concerns to to the board before anything happens.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything here before we move to S M P?
I just kind of, right, I'm just kind of curious what constitutes a declaration of public emergency?
You'd have to ask the Board of Health. I I don't know how they made that determination, probably just the number of homeless people. Maybe they, you know, do you know Maya? How they came up with the declaration?
I do not off the top of my head, but um that we do have the resolution that does declare that emergency. So we can double check before the next meeting and see if they cite anything specific within those findings.
And so I, my, my question is going to be on the requirements that can be waived and are there any sideboard on that? I mean, I know you said currently we limit uh encampment for the people. Can the director, C P E D, say, hey, you know what? You want a hundred people? Go for it.
It, their regulations are based on the number of people, based on the size of the camp, the size of the camp is a regulate.
What I'm asking is.
Yeah.
We know right now there's forty.
Yes.
The number.
Yeah.
But if this says that it can be waived, is there a limit to what he can do? You know, and the other thing I'll go back to, you said a require a public meeting is required. Again, can be waived.
Right.
So right now, there's an emergency. There is no, under this, there is no requirement for public meetings.
It can be waived. There's a requirement and there's a, there's, there's a possibility.
If he can waive it, it's not a requirement.
There's a possibility, well, he may not waive it. There's a possibility that the applicant will say, we want to get this up and running. Can we waive the public informational meeting? And the director very likely would say, no, that's re, I I won't, I won't waive that. He could, but I would guess that he wouldn't.
Yes, I think that's exactly my point.
Yeah.
It's, if it can be waived, it is not a requirement.
Okay.
In my, I mean, I don't think anything we put in here that says, you know, in an emergency, you don't have to do this.
Well, they do have to do it.
It no longer becomes a requirement.
Yeah.
Correct?
Depends on what the director decides.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't, yeah.
He, he decides.
Right.
To whom is so aware of it.
Yeah.
It is no longer a requirement once it's a public emergency because he alone can do away with it.
That's a lot of power.
Yeah.
All right. Well, is there anything else on this topic? We're running a little long and I know this is going to be a big topic and it's an ambitious timeline. And I would like to help you get through this, but.
Thank you.
That's ambitious. Okay, well then we will move on to uh continued business item number five, which is work session on the Shoreline Master Program with Senior Planner Andrew DeFobus. Yeah.
Hey, Commissioner, Andrew DeFobus, Senior Planner with Community Planning. So tonight, uh, it's another opportunity for Planning Commission to continue to ask questions or provide feedback uh on the uh, on the draft S M P, the recommendation for the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, we're working from a draft dated May eighteenth that includes all the changes that were made to the draft since the public hearing draft was published in twenty twenty one. And tonight the plan is to focus on um chapter nineteen five hundred uh permitting requirements and then get as far as we can if we can get into uh six hundred and go through it, right, but five hundred is up first. Permit requirements, all warmed up from the last.
Andrew, since we're, since we're doing um big screens, if the commissioners that are zoomed in have something to add in, I can't see you, so just find a good moment to pipe in and that would be great.
Okay, and I'll go ahead. Thank you for reminders. Share my screen with everyone. So you'll see.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe we can keep them there till we see. Um, but yes, I think that's good advice. Okay, so uh, yeah, I'm just curious to know uh what questions, comments, planning commission has uh moving forward. So um uh, anything, there actually were any changes in my five hundred oh five oh, but I'll give folks a chance to ask any questions if they've got them. Otherwise. Otherwise, um, how about section nineteen five hundred oh seven five, the permit types definitions? There were some changes made to this section largely to um switch around how we refer to the shoreline permits. Uh, how they are classed into our existing permit system, making it consistent with other portions of county code and taking away type five, which doesn't exist anywhere else, and essentially realigning all the shoreline permits with our existing permit structure. Um, so there were some changes there. Hopefully not, that's that's shattering. Uh, there's nothing on oh seven five?
Uh, Andy?
Oh, yes.
Don Carmen here. I'm still confused with these. I thought we were going to do something to call it like that type two or type three. You know what they are, but then in reading later in the chapters, the type three could be an S D P or it could be a cup. And I thought a type five was always a cup, you know, so I I guess. Um, it it's kind of funny to refer to them as two different kinds. Type three and and then the rest of the chapter, it's an S D P or now it's a cup too.
So it goes back to um that the the permit, the numbered, the numbering reflects the process that the permit actually goes through. And as an S D P is a substantial development permit, goes through a different approval process than a conditional use permit or a variance. The conditional use permits and the variances actually require ecology approval before they take effect. Unlike a a substantial development permit where the final decision rests with the county. And so originally, a type five process was was created to to recognize that fact, that those permits are different. However, there is no type five permit process in Thurston County Code anywhere else. Um, and without amending, you know, title twenty of county code, it kind of, uh, references to a type five are just kind of hanging out there. Uh, and so we redid everything to fit within the existing permit structure uh with it, with a uh acknowledgement that, you know, type anything that's type three, uh, if it, if it is a conditional use permit or a variance, it does require ecology approval. So that was kind of here. Um, a- anyway, you can see it on the screen now. It was already some existing language there prior to the hearing. Um, but it kind of got clarified. So that, you know, they do follow that other process. They are different, but when it comes to they really are the most like a type three. Uh, so without totally changing our code, you know, this was an attempt to remedy with the existing code. Um, I hope that answers the there's nothing else in oh seven five, I would ask, are there any questions, comments on, this is a long section, um, section nineteen five hundred one. I don't see.
So you have to start with Commissioner Halverson. Uh, this is more of a question, uh, and I, this may have been done before I've done a planning commission, but on nineteen five hundred one hundred A five.
Mm-hmm.
Permit or written approval is required, blah, blah, blah. Does that include sheds under five hundred square feet? Which the county does not require permit for through your permit section?
Uh, it could. It potentially could. And so it wouldn't necessarily require a substantial development permit, but it could potentially require some type of written approval. Uh, and there is language further on in this section, I believe, uh, or actually it's above it in number one there that attempts to to state that, you know, not every single thing that you do in the shoreline is going to require a permit or a written approval. We don't want people to need you know, an email or a letter from staff to replace a board on their dock. So trying to get, this section is attempting to get all that wording correct so that we have that to build on, but then um, there's going to be a lot to do with the um administration of this document and some, you know, the chapter in the pamphlet is going to be the types of development that require permits or written approval and the types that don't. So people know, I can do the following things without even picking up a phone. I can do this next set of things with, you know, a written approval of some kind. These other things require a permit.
My point is that around lakes, we have people all the time building sheds. And it used to be two hundred fifty square foot. The county raised that a couple of years ago to five hundred square feet. Okay, and it's in your permit section on a little flyer that says these things do not require a permit. So people are doing it.
Should say building permit. Does that require a building permit? Because you don't need, and yeah, not only is it a building permit, but let's try to limit this to public hearing and newer.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying. It it needs to be something that is also cross referenced with building permit section with the flyers they're putting out. And I'm getting this question.
Yeah, yeah, I think that goes back out to the, just the, we have an opportunity when we roll this document out to reengage the public with with education about things you can do in the shoreline without any sort of approval things you cannot do because, you know, you don't need a, you don't need a permit to go to Home Depot and get a small shed, but technically you are not allowed to put that in a critical area of water, for example. So, but yes, that does happen and it's it's, we play a role in making sure that we are um educating the public.
Commissioner Day. Yeah, so I have a question about uh fish habitat enhancement projects uh that must be approved in one of the following ways. Sorry, it's on page eighty four. I was wondering why, um, for example, uh, like federal projects, like this is all state?
Uh.
Like something through the Fish and Wildlife Services or?
Yeah, so all of this stuff, all of this language here, I believe, these are all um items that the state requires master programs to exempt from a shoreline substantial development permit if they meet all of those criteria. So that, this language is is cut, literally cut and paste from the W A C that master programs are required to demonstrate that we comply with.
Okay, so that's a requirement, but that doesn't mean we couldn't also do federal federally.
Um. If it is, if it meets the definition of substantial development and is not otherwise exempted under state law, we are required to require substantial development. So we could look at that.
Okay, so we have a system here where we exempt state kind of identified projects that are not federally identified.
But there's another section in here. Um, uh, so this section specifically is talking about exemptions from one permit type under the S M P.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure there's another section that, you know, master programs, there is no approval required for any of the following types of projects. And I think there are something, there's a federal nexus to that piece of it. So I could look, I could look at that, swing by it, but um I'm not sure, other than that, I'm not sure about a workaround for this specific language because we're kind of tied to, if it fits in this box, it's exempt. If it doesn't fit in this box, you know, you require this type of permit because it is substantial.
Yeah, I I think this is a, this is a gap, actually.
Yeah, I can look into it. I can ask ecology.
Yeah, I'm sure. It just seems like, it seems to be like an oversight.
Okay.
Just to focus on state programs to the extent of it.
Andy, back on five hundred one hundred, is that written approval actually the letter of exemption that you were talking about?
Uh, not always, no.
No, so it's could be two different things, sir.
Yes, yeah, a letter of exemption is only required in certain instances. Uh, and we, again, if you're doing uh, replacing a couple, you know, boards on your dock, we do not want to issue a letter of exemption, even if you are exempt from that permit. We need some other administrative action um that can satisfy that. Um, yeah. So, okay, so yes, um, Commissioner Day, I'll take that down and um just ask if there's any, I think there's something else somewhere in this chapter that I might address that, but um I'm, I'll look into that. Okay, uh, so again, that's that section nineteen five hundred one hundred is a, a long one. Um, does anyone else have comments in that section?
So, Andy, the same question on um the C B, which you have an exemption from the S D P. Does that require an exemption of uh letter or exemption?
Uh, what page are you on?
The next page, it's uh five hundred one hundred C two B, well, it's in A also. Use the word an exemption from. So when you have an exemption from, do you have to get a letter of exemption?
There is a section here that specifically talks about uh where the letters of exemption apply. Um, and that's actually something that's already. There we go. Uh. So, yeah, for any project qualifying for a permit exemption that requires Federal River Harbor Act, Federal Clean Water Act, State H P A, uh, we have to prepare a letter of exemptions for those. The county shall also prepare exemption letters for other types of exemptions, generally for activities at or below the ordinary high watermark. So other things that are landwork would not necessarily require a letter of exemption. And so that language that starts out this, this paragraph is what we are required to do from the W A C. But then local jurisdictions have the the latitude to prepare those letters of exemption in other circumstances that they see fit. This language is detailing how this draft attempts to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, no, the attempt, the exempt or intent is is to, is not to require one of those letters for every single project, you know, that's not what we are trying to do. So.
Okay, and then going into number four.
Yeah.
A, um, you've got the uh five thousand dollars there. That should be four thou, seven thousand forty seven.
It actually should be higher than that. It just got raised.
I was just going to say.
It's like eighty four hundred now for going forward.
Yeah, my question was, what about twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three?
Yeah, and I think technically though, this language does come straight from the W A C, so they do say five thousand dollars, but then they say as inflated as you know, as changed with inflation. So, so whatever they adopt, um, I don't think the number seven thousand forty seven even appears in this document, um, because it just, we benchmark it to whatever the number is that comes out of the state. So I think this is still the correct language, but we acknowledge that, you know, in twenty twenty two, that number is going to be higher than it is, or twenty twenty three, it's going to be higher than it is now.
Well, I would think that we'd want to put at least the most recent number there. So when people read it, they, they're not totally misled and have to go hunt and pack for what the number is.
That will absolutely be in a fact sheet that deals with uh S M P permits and the cost thresholds that trigger those permits. Anything else in nineteen five hundred one hundred?
Uh, same, I guess the same point on H, uh, it's on uh docs.
Mm-hmm.
Player in docs, it's
Right.
Twenty thousand where it was, twenty two five, and it's probably gone up, so.
Yeah. Uh, I'm not aware if that one has changed. Um, again, this is, this is cut and paste directly from the W A C. I don't know. So if that were to change, um, that would be something that the next periodic update would be seeking to address. That would be a requirement for this master program to be updated. What would happen in the interim if they raise it in two years and the master program doesn't come around again for eight, four years? What would happen in the interim if they raise it in two years and the master program doesn't come around again for eight, four years? That's, I can see that being a question, um, so I could look into that.
Yeah, the number I'm giving you is the one right out of the ecology handbook.
Right.
So, which is the higher, you know, twenty-two, five, and eleven, two there, and the seven thousand.
Yeah.
So those, that should be what's in the documents, I would think, is what ecology says.
Can you just make reference ecology's number?
We may be able to do that. Yeah, I just, you know, this is, is cut and paste. It's what's in, it's what's in the WAC. So, uh, I can make sure that any changes to that are going to ruffle feathers when we go together approved. But I think that would make sense to try to write it in a way that we don't have to change this automatically if that requirement changes.
Yeah. And I'm sure that will be one of the biggest thing, big letters right on top of that fact sheet when you walk into permit center.
Is what.
What that number will be when a person walks in the door that day.
Sure. Yeah, it shouldn't change that often. I think that the substantial development permit changes every five years. Well, it's subject to change every five years. So I'm not sure what sort of schedule.
Is for dogs, yeah.
Yeah, I.
I don't think those have actually changed, have they?
I'm, I'm not sure. They did not, we recently just got a letter that, you know, notifying us that the SDP was going up. We didn't get any sort of communication about these.
Because there's never language in there for having an adjuster. I haven't seen any language for adjusting that price only for the SDP.
Okay. That one. Anything else in that section?
One section.
In, uh, five hundred one hundred.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
City eighty-nine?
Eighty-nine. It's, uh, item F three.
Yes.
So it says there that as long as they meet the, uh, conditions of RCW, da-da-da-da-da, they don't have to get a substantial development consent, uh, permit. Now, my, my real, I have a real high concern for stormwater. Impacts it has on shoreline ecological function and water quality in our, in our water bodies. I, I, I think that still needs to go through some kind of permitting process that requires them to show that they're not polluting our waters.
Wouldn't that show up in the SEPA, Doug?
I don't know.
So it's also a requirement under their, uh, under their own.
Yeah.
They have an NPDAS permit to stay compliant as well.
And I don't want to be a broken record. Uh, ecology requires this language to be in the local master program. So we are preempted by the state from requiring shoreline permits for the projects listed here.
Okay. I guess I don't have to like it. I just have to.
I will, I will, I will triple check that, but that is, that is.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt my feelings either if you kind of clamp down on them a little bit, but I'd be surprised if we're allowed.
I will just, I will triple check that, but I'm, that language is, that's not how I would write something. So that is, that's, yeah, okay. Okay, um, so if there's.
One last question.
Yes.
Number six in the same section. Why did we delete that?
So I deleted number six and the attempt was to replace that language with what came up above, uh, in, it was A three. So this was language that I had created prior to the public hearing, um, but attempted to kind of walk that back and be more general, rather than kind of pinpoint specific projects and just say, you know, we're not talking about the impact of a project. We're talking about, does it meet the definition of development or not? Is it substantial development or not? Kind of tying it back to those things that are in the act, um, to reference whether or not a permit or an approval is going to be required. Um, so we can still have all those, um, kind of decision points or, or, um, you know, aids in, in describing that for the public in fact sheets. But when it comes to what's in the master program, I tried to tie it back to the SMA, just be specific to, are you development or not? You know, are you in, where are you in shoreline jurisdiction, et cetera?
Well, the, the one of the reasons I asked that question is that you used a reference to this item, uh, in response to some community, uh, requests or, you know, letters of concern. And you said, well, you don't have to worry about these maintenance items because of item six here.
Right.
And so it really needs to be taken care of well in another section.
Yeah.
If that's what you've done.
Yeah, and I think that, I mean, that's the intent, that that section up there would, you know, if it's not development, that it wouldn't necessarily require, um, those, uh, this section permits. Yeah, it just didn't really belong here. Uh, it was also guidance I got from ecology because really the rest of this stuff is coming from state law and just kind of tacking that on there versus putting it in more of a general applicability section for, for the shoreline permits. So it, it's more, I don't know, it, it's upfront with all the global language versus at the very bottom. So hopefully that's easier for people to find and see it as well. And yeah, none of that, you know, taking this away is not preempted us from creating fact sheet materials that explain these things where things use these types of projects or others to, to show what does, you know, permit or, or what have you. So, okay, uh, if there's nothing else, uh, ask, are there any questions in section one oh five, which again is very long. There's eight and K on this one.
Nothing very.
Uh, any more? The. Okay.
Doug, did you have something on one oh five?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Right. Oh, shoot, there is a one ten. Uh, okay, so one-ten enforcement and penalties. Uh, I'm not aware that there were any changes made to this section. So, but I'll pause and ask if there are any questions on that section. Okay, so now we're on the nineteen six hundred, sorry, the shoreline use of development standard. Um, one item I would tee up here, planning commission. So when the public hearing draft, excuse me, the draft recommendation came out in May, one section that wasn't quite cooked was the agriculture section. I'm still looking at some things public had asked for, looking for some things the planning commission had asked. And so I did produce supplemental memo. So, um, when we get to that section, I can ask if there's questions and refer to that memo. But essentially, um, just taking a look at the standards and trying to see if we can make it clear how a shoreline buffer could be reduced for agriculture. Didn't seem like it was clear in the draft, um, and so, or were there anything we can do to increase flexibility there? So we took a look at that, uh, and we are proposing to rearrange that section for clarity, start out more generally, and then move into the buffer language. Um, and also add language so that if you do reduce that buffer, you can do it without a shoreline variance. That would represent some new flexibility in the draft because currently as written, other uses do require shoreline variance to reduce that buffer. So, um, that's something that could increase flexibility. It's something that ecology has supported. And then also, uh, adding some language, uh, in that section that deals with the dormancy piece. And when an agricultural operation ceases for a certain amount of time, at what point would that person be able to resume that operation? And without any of the new requirements taking effect. And so there is some, um, state law has provisions to address dormancy. So the proposal is to go ahead and add, um, the word dormant in there. And I realize I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself, so I'm going to pause, um, and ask if anyone has any questions in, um, either sections nineteen six hundred, one hundred, or one oh two. Pretty short.
I had a question about that last point, Andrew.
Yeah.
So maybe you've already said you're going to do this differently, but that last version you had in there just make it, made it seem unlimited. Like if they let, let it lay fallow, they could say they were letting it lay fallow for thirty years. Was there going to be a time limit on that?
Um, not that I'm aware of, and, and we kind of raised that question. Um, I raised that question with ecology because when you think about your master program and when this is adopted, it's kind of a snapshot of the conditions that are there. And so if someone had an agricultural operation from way back when, and it's all grown back in, and now they want to come in and change the ground again for agriculture, technically, does that represent a net loss from what you have today? And it may, but it sounds like in the way that the state law works, the way those exemptions work, that's, that is an exemption that is made for agriculture, um, uh, in that scenario. So there really, that I'm aware of is not a, um, a time limit on that. We kind of looked at and exploring, sometimes you'll say, you know, as of the effective date of this ordinance or something like that to try to start that clock. But I don't believe, um, we are able to do that in this scenario. And, and, uh, to the caveat being, um, you know, I expect to get full comments from ecology when we submit or when this, this version of the draft, uh, moves out of planning commission, they'll get a copy. And if, um, there's clarification that needs to happen there, certainly we get that. But to your question, um, I don't believe there is a time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, so if there's nothing on one hundred or one oh two, uh, chapter, or excuse me, section one oh five is the matrix, which largely was just changed to be consistent with changes made to the text below. So are there any questions, comments on the, the use matrix?
Bottom page two of the matrix.
Yes.
So that boat lifts, that's marine. Cause you got lakes on the top of the next page.
Uh, I missed a word. Okay, thank you. Yes, we, the planning commission did a lot of lifting in this section to separate them out and go through and do these individual things. So I want to make sure we.
And the top, uh, next page. Halfway down restoration enhancement. The all other sections I find in the following pages except this one. There's nothing in this chapter that covers this.
Yeah, um, and if not, then those projects are guided by the general principles that start this chapter. Um, but actually that is something that I have remarked, I was just talking about this today with Chris, um, because we get people, they ask questions about, we want to do this type of project, restore habitat.
Talking about retaining laws.
Yeah.
That was a big issue, both in the public hearing and on the onboard.
Yeah.
Yet there's nothing in this chapter that covers that.
Right, so I think that's something that, that I need to look at, um, because we want to make sure that when people want to do restoration projects, handsome projects, that it's clear what the requirements are and that the requirements are not onerous. We don't want to stand in the way of, of something that's going to have a, you know, true benefit to shoreline.
I just think like all of the sections in this table, uh, you know, those three pages, it is addressed specifically.
Right.
In this chapter, that one is not at all.
And I think there's, it, there's also some language about restoration in chapter nineteen four hundred, the general regulations. Um, but we can, I can look at that.
And if we go down to the next page. Item number twenty-one.
I have one, I have one on this page. If you want to do that before you go. Under the, uh, the shoreline stabilization, I thought that we had changed the classification for urban conservancy and shoreline residential to, uh, um, an ADP. This is a P, so they don't have to have a hearing examiner. It's.
I'd have to try to go back and find the meeting.
That sounds familiar to me too.
They'll talk about that. Um, that may be something that I missed, um.
That's what I had in my notes anyway, so.
Okay. Okay, so was that specifically for the hard stabilization or?
Well, for all three.
Okay, okay. And that would have been. Trying to think when we did that because if there's no change in the text here, that, I didn't touch it since the public hearing. So that would have been something that, when I was preparing the public hearing documents that, okay, so I'm just trying to figure out which YouTube video I'm going to have to go back and look at.
It looks like in there, there is an exemption for soft shore, um, in your footnote seventeen.
Yeah. Right. Yes, and that goes, that ties back to an allowance that's allowed in, in state law as well. Yeah, and, uh, same goes frankly, um, for even, you know, bulkheads. If it's just, if it's to protect a family residence, uh, and meet certain criteria, it's also exempt from that SDP. But, so in this instance, we're saying if it doesn't meet that criteria, um, it does require that SDP. Um, and I, that's, that's changed over ten, this whole section has changed, I think, a couple of times. Okay, all right, so urban conservancy, shoreline residential, uh, was it supposed to be?
Administrative.
Yeah, and we can also, if we get that far in the document, we can look, sometimes it's just the changes made in the text below, the permit requirements. Okay. All right. I will, uh, I want to get your order right. Okay, uh, and did I hear there was another? Something on the next.
Next page, item twenty-one.
Yeah.
Note twenty-one. It says twenty-five, the transportation section is twenty-eight.
Okay, I asked, I'll see the period there, so that's two things to fix.
I know I'm just picking, but we went through this so many times.
This is great.
A little bit further down. And six hundred one-ten agriculture.
Okay.
I think you could join some paragraph A, two, and three together. They say the exact same thing, and you've done that in several other areas.
Uh, sure. That's, that's text.
That's right.
Okay, so, yeah, so agriculture, uh, next nineteen six hundred one-ten, open that section up for folks, including the contents of the memo that's sent out to planning commission. If there are any questions, comments, otherwise, uh.
So, I'll start.
Thank you.
Definition of water body.
I, yep. Yeah. I'm guessing, well, not guessing, my, I would interpret that as, uh,
Shoreline water body?
Uh, you know, not necessarily, or, you know, wetland or something like that.
Is it only sub, that's subject to jurisdiction, SMP jurisdiction?
Yeah. I think this is the place to have that conversation and make sure it's clear. Um, I don't think it would be intended to mean like, you know, agricultural ponds that are part of a ag operation.
I don't know how the SMP, that it wouldn't have jurisdiction over this outside.
Well, it, it would have jurisdiction over, you know, small ponds and wetlands that are within jurisdiction.
Within jurisdiction, right. If, if, if these water bodies are outside of SMP jurisdiction, SMP can't say you can't spray.
Or the portion of your ag operation that's outside of.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, any of this is only going to apply for new agricultural operations on new agricultural lands within shoreline jurisdiction. Right, um, so, um, Commissioner Nelson, have any suggestions?
That's, that's my concern. I'll use, you know, one of my friends, uh, ponds on the property, that they actually don't treat. And they have to spray them. Now, granted, they're already good. But if they were to build another pond, it's, it's a pond. It's technically, I mean, depending on your definition, it's a water pond. But I think this, you know, that's, that's my concern. And I'm thinking, you know, we, if we limit this to the shore. You know, so if I've got a pond in the shoreline, let's say I live near a, or near a river, I've got a pond in the, that falls into that shoreline. That's not what we're trying to protect. What we're trying to protect is the shoreline.
I think if it's an artificial pond created for the purposes of agriculture, that's one thing. But if it's, if it's a pond, because it's a, you know, a wetland under size, that's not, uh, meaning of a shoreline definition, then maybe that is different.
Yeah. So if there's. So, um, I guess. So, I guess, well, and obviously the next one's a question for me. I think, and third, I will say, if we're going to require them to have a farm plan. Why are we going to tell the people the right farm plan? What practices they give?
I think that would go back to um making sure that that farm plan is meeting requirements, you know, that loss, the requirements of SMP and SMA. That's in that one.
Well, that's that's the next one that I have.
But I did have a.
Says, no fertilizers, pesticides or herbicides used in agriculture practices, unless the applicant demonstrate application of such such substances will not result in direct runoff or contaminated waters into water bodies or offer recharge areas. And I think that pretty much falls into what a farm plan.
So the farm plan would already not allow that. Yeah, well, and that's. Good, yeah. Yeah, and.
And I mean, I think this is, this is something from the time I started doing this, we've seen where the county says, oh, we want you to follow the conservation district or natural resource conservation, but we're going to put these other rules on it too. You know, it was the same thing in critical areas, it was, you know, it's the same thing. I'll use the example, recently, some of you remember that, the Tumwater Joint Plan. Tumwater wants us to, wanted us to recommend adoption of their urban act. Rules in the urban growth area of Tumwater. But I can tell you that anybody that knows anything about ag knows that those are, we don't want ag in our area. I mean, it limits. Ag operations to one animal per acre, which is way. Rights of farm plan. And so that, I mean, that's what I think is, if we're going to, we can reduce a lot of this stuff by saying, you need a farm plan, right? Written, and it's, it has, you know, I can't go write a farm plan.
And that's how the uh the the new optional language kind of addresses that too. If you want to reduce your buffer, um, you can do so as long as, you know, you have that farm plan that's meeting on that loss. Um, and that we can see it is the other thing, because we need to make sure that that is meeting the requirements of the SMA as well. And so maybe that's something to to echo here, um, because we don't want to be contradictory or duplicative, right? If you're going to have to meet something that looks different elsewhere, you know, if we can work with that and if it's the requirements of SMA as well, we want to, we want to work with that. So if there's any suggestions for changing that for the planning commission to consider.
Just just so I I'm clear, but obviously I'm on the form. So when this, so this is sounding to you like it's redundant, if or somebody knows how to write a farm plan, they would already know this or somewhere else where they would be.
Yeah, I'm saying, if I'm writing, if I go to the conservation district and get a farm plan. They aren't going to write a farm plan and say, you know, go spread this fertilizer in the prick or in the river in the lake. They're going to say, you know, we don't want runoff, we want to keep this fertilizer so far away from this water body. We don't want to spray right up to the edge of the river, we want to stay back our own feet so that we are going to be impacting.
Are you suggesting F should be straightened?
I'm suggesting, uh, I think it's C through G, E.
And and. Also to clarify, um, if you're looking at the memo, just so you know, E and F, those are not new, those have been there since before, well, the planning commission, public hearing. But yeah, just for the record. Um, so, but is, they're not necessarily.
There because I was told you couldn't take them out. Uh, the same, we were told that. Substitutions. Or directly, obviously.
Well, they are now, I fixed that.
I know they are now.
They are now, um, so then this language, as far as I'm aware, this language, so like any other use, SMPs are required to have development standards for agriculture, new agriculture that's sure no net loss, but the legislature is not super prescriptive on this. Like this language here is not a requirement, it 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 is intended to meet that requirement of no net loss, but it's not prescribed. We don't have to have that specific language to be there. Yeah, I don't know, and I, I don't know how often farm plans are done versus not done. So in the absence of the farm plan for a new operation, how does the SMP ensuring, you know, no net loss? What factors or of the impacts ag are considering, I think that's why that's in.
So I just, I just think if you're not going to be doing something with. Two hundred or two hundred feet of the water body, you're not going to act anyways unless you're just going out there dumping. Which is already is an issue, it's not something. And I think what we're trying to get at here is to make sure that people that do stuff that's legal aren't causing a problem. Whereas if I go. Back to, if I go down to the river, like, oh, I didn't finish spraying, but I've still got spray in my tank and I dump it in the river. That's an obvious issue. But it's an obvious issue whether, I mean, that's something that's not legal, period. So I don't know if it need, I don't, I don't think if we're going to require, what I'm saying is if we're going to say, to get this reduction, you need a farm plan.
This isn't for the reduction, this is just a general requirement in general.
New agriculture.
Yes, for new agriculture, yeah. Yeah, the only things applying to the buffer reduction are um in in your memo are is what you see as strike through underline and um uh highlighted.
So we, we really could just lean back on our plan and not have the rest of this.
I could certainly look at that if you want to make that a requirement, that all new agriculture on new ag lands must.
Now I'm out of depth, Scott is requiring a farm plan and all new agriculture a reasonable thing.
I mean, a lot of people do it, I, the problem I would say is probably staff time because the conservation districts and NRCS have a limited number of people, and I don't, you know, and I don't know, but, you know, the person that wants to start a little truck garden in their backyard and do five acres of fruits and vegetables. You know, it may take somebody a couple of hours work to do it. Whereas a farm like we have, which is several hundred acres, I think the last time we did a farm planning took over two years. But just be, and part of that was because, you know, when we did it, all of a sudden there was not funding at the conservation district. So they just kind of put it on the back burner and said, oh, we'll get to you when we get to it.
And so absent a farm plan, the standards that are in this document are intended to kind of put those sideboards on those operations and ensure, you know, ecological impacts are being kept to a no net loss. Certainly, I think, perfect.
So I would say with that, I think we need to narrow down on on water bodies.
I was wondering, I was kind of thinking, I wondered how water bodies regulated by this program. Is that because that's going to cover shorelines and that's going to cover anything, any wet critical areas that's going to cover.
Is that good with you guys? That's good, Scott, yeah.
Okay, great, I'll make that change, um, and I wonder if F could potentially be reported. The application of shall not result in versus saying none unless.
Well, I mean, the thing I'm thinking, looking at that is, say you've got a hundred and fifty foot shoreline jurisdiction and your new ag, so you can't go inside that anyways. You're going to have a hard time doing anything that's going to make it to the water body.
Well, and it's, yeah. I can back up a little, see what buffers are. Oh, wait, no, can't, there's, I have to check the four hundred. So. Is there a specific?
I mean, I just don't, I guess. I mean, really what I have to try and do and save people time and money, I, I mean, concerns maybe that somebody's going to say, well, you need to go hire somebody to show me that you're putting a hundred pounds of nitrogen on a hundred and fifty feet away from the water, doesn't, when common sense says that's not going to happen.
Can can we just do something along the lines of at the end of F or has a farm plan?
Well, if you have a farm plan or has designated by farm plan.
Yeah. Make that a whole instead of a. Or a farm.
I go back a little bit to what Scott said, if I had a five acre lot and I want to do four acres of my creative gentleman farm, do I need a farm plan? If it's along the shoreline.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm like, I don't know, I don't know that there's anything that here is requiring you to farm that, plus you're trying to do a reduced buffer. And that um, that was something that was in the draft prior, it's still in draft now, but outside of that, I don't know that it, I'd have to pause and read through it.
Scott, is there a downside to having these sideboards? And then in addition to the sideboards, have an option to use a farm plan and then the applicant can go either way, either using these sideboards or using the farm plan?
Well, choice the app. I mean, I think the farm plan is, if you're going to have a new agriculture, you want to, that's good. The point I'm getting at here, and I think it's the point we use in every other, we put a certain buffer on these to protect these things from, and we also have buffers on critical areas. River two hundred and fifty feet. Unless you're doing something really bad, really illegal, you know, something really stupid. You are not going, I mean, there shouldn't be a need for us to put a a regulation out there and that say, by the way, you need to prove that it's not going to. Oh, sorry. That that's our job is to put those regulations out there for, well, for this, our our example is no net loss. And I just, I mean, I don't see how this does anything but frustrates people. And goes against the commission's desire to improve agriculture in Jersey County. Because that puts, this puts it on me to prove. Which, how do I prove it?
You need to call it construction in regulation to either have something that's really descriptive, since you must do exactly this or you have to demonstrate the standard, that's a really, really, really common construction in regulation. It's not unusual. And also, when I think about like, who I would want to have farm plans, I don't know how you'd set up like this. I would actually want that five acre hobby farmer to be under more scrutiny than somebody who has a larger operation, who has financial incentives to not overspray, who has this long term, if the likelihood comes from where doing stuff where. So what's the solution here?
I mean, I I don't think there's a need for F. I know it makes people feel good to say, oh, you can't spray fertilizer unless you can show that it isn't going to cause harm. But we also have critical areas ordinance that you have to go by. We have uh, we have a buffer on which, the the shoreline buffer on a river is less than the current areas. So. I mean, that's, that's my, what I keep coming back to is you want me to demonstrate, well, I don't have a degree to tell you, even if I did, nobody that works in that office is going to listen to me because I'm a farmer. They're going to want somebody with a certain degree, certain licenses, whatever, or that works for a certain organization.
That you're. Yeah, so strike F, that's what people want.
I can also, uh, I can add this to my list, talk to ecology about the near future and see if I can, if there's any other solution that sort of addresses the concern related to chemicals, but also is not.
I would say the other option would be to turn it around.
Yeah.
And put the onus on somebody to say that this is going to cause harm.
Would you know what the applicants would be in charge for?
True. That's just what, so just just to get through today, would it be okay to have Andy talk to ecology and see what they think the best way forward through this is? In lieu of striking it, and then we can decide if that's. So just go ahead, if you're going to take like a presumptive approach, like maybe there are guidelines for application around water bodies that you've referenced that are done by somebody else. So that I think would be the thing to look for, is if somebody's already done that work.
Or if we can point to, like Scott was saying, if there if there are other requirements that must be met, EPA, whatever, we can point to someone else and.
Exactly.
Yeah, I can look at that. Because again, I'm not duplicating or.
I don't know the exact numbers, I probably, I did it one time, just, you know, where where I'm at pretty much with my fertilizer. Fortunately, I'm not near water bodies or we've got a natural, like my parents' farm, we've got a natural tree line. Obviously, I'm, I'm not going to go through the spread fertilizer because I can't cut it.
This discussion brings up an interesting question about scalability of these regulations and um and just something for us to think about the five hundred acre farm versus five acre farm, if they both have to hire an expert, what's the, you know, they both have the same amount to get a study done or to have somebody come and prove it, but the the impact on um financial operation is dramatically different. So I don't know, there's a way to to think about that, that um there's a way that that we can have regulations that scale so that um we aren't preventing small people, you know, small operations from getting into agriculture because they want to, because they want to see, so support agriculture and support agriculture in the beginning operations, um, so I don't know, that's just a comment that.
It comes to me, you think of words, technical assistance.
Yeah, and that's what I was just thinking, there may be some sideboards that NRCS or the conservation district has, says, you know. So you know, said maybe says, hey, you know what, nobody putting fertilizer on Christie County is going to do harm if they're at this distance. So and if that's less than the buffer than the shoreline buffer.
So why don't we, um, if you can noodle on that with ecology a little bit, bring it back, and then next time we see, start from there, it's done with six hundred, right?
Well, I mean, I I'd still want to get my missions, um, like, how do these options look, are they, you know, uh, yes.
Do you want to finish this memo right now?
Uh, I don't want to start, well, I don't think we're going to finish it now, I don't want to step on the other topics that are still on the agenda. But.
After this, what what is next after this?
Uh, aft, so after agriculture, it's it's the rest of chapter six hundred, um, I'm not, it'll just depend on what level of comments planning commission has on that one. But. level of comments planning commission has on that one, but as far as.
And then appendixes?
Uh, seven hundred and the appendices, right?
Okay, so we're gonna have to come back, we're gonna have to have you back at least once, if not two more times.
Love it to be one.
That would be awesome. I I would like that too, and and as such, if you would prepare a. Suggested motion, something like that too at some point.
Yeah, take a look at one fifteen aquaculture, subparagraph A three. It just looks like it doesn't match up with chart ninety eight, Andy.
Yeah, and that'd be great, just burn through this last couple. We are. What are we, ten months since our public hearing?
So yeah, yeah, and I I was also thinking about sending some guidance to you all about the appendices because appendix E is critical area stuff. It's hundreds of pages, but it's literally drag and drop, so it's kind of more conceptual station if there's one to be had versus reading through all those pages because we're not proposing any changes to the actual.
That's what I have. It's just that ordinance put in.
We either, we either picked it up or we didn't. Yeah, we we picked it up as it was written or we omitted whole sections that didn't apply.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we're gonna move on to our next work session, item number six, which is wireless code update with Caitlin Nelson.
Okay, we are discussing wireless code update and specifically how the draft code addresses this part of the hearing. So back as a follow up from our last work session. Public hearing was held last summer with. I showed you the slide of the last work session. We had talked about what zones might be considered as a priority area and instead of listing these out in like a numerical fashion like this. The member that you received has uh industrial, commercial and long term forestry zones as a priority and request additional reasoning for all of the others. So does that work for everyone or would you like that to be done differently?
Commissioner Pestner, did you have anything on this particular area?
Nope.
I think we're gonna move forward with that.
Okay, good.
Good.
We had also talked about a permitting table based on Pierce County's code. You had asked about incentives incentivizing certain areas by making some towers an administrative permit. So I, this is a, this is previously, uh, commercial, industrial and long term forestry into this table as towers permitted under ministry, especially uh special use permit, whereas they normally pay a hearing examiner. Was that the direction that you wanted to go or are there other changes that you'd like to see this table that I didn't address? That's a very simple way of incentivizing and it seemed like that was the main concern that you had listed. Pierce County has a couple of different examples, but we are still requiring things like camouflage. We didn't talk about in our last meeting for things like that, so. So I didn't propose any additional to this for now.
And so we've got here, I'll show that.
I'm gonna show the old draft first, yeah.
Yeah, the the last, what was that? Oh. Yeah, the powerpoint from the last meeting had been uploaded and changed, so I apologize. Your copy, if you printed it before, like four thirty is is last work session.
This is the copy we got in the mail, so it's different.
Oh, yes, because because you had all asked for a copy of it sent to you, so it's the last work sessions. Right, so. Everything in this, just really quick, everything in this proposed draft table on the right is just the table format. Most of it is the disabled format of what is just written out regularly. The only change is the administrative special use permit for towers that are in those zones that we talked about.
Does anybody have any comments on this?
So we're moving towards on the right.
Yes, sorry, the the table on the left was what we talked about at the last work session, and that's the example from Pierce County. I'm just showing them side by side to show that this is the format that we're basing it off of. But ours would be much smaller, unless you have other things that you would like to include.
I like this.
Very nice. Let's move on to the next portion of the. Yeah.
Okay, with that, I have the slides from the last work session on setbacks for reference, but otherwise the planning commission had asked for more time to consider what you would like to propose, so who would like to make a proposal?
Commissioner Pestner, did you have anything on setbacks?
Uh, not specific setbacks, no.
So is everybody okay with the staff recommendation on the issue of setbacks?
That's the current draft, that's the current, the current draft, yes.
Because you got, this is the current code.
So, yeah, sorry, this is the current code. I also have the current draft in here. Yes.
That's what you're proposing?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that wasn't the other.
Yeah. I think there was some concerns spoken previously specifically about setbacks and residential zones. I did discuss this with the consultants and they are not comfortable proposing an example of larger setbacks, they would rather just say that this is what they're recommending and if you have a different recommendation, we will provide both to board.
Um, in this residential zone where it says the minimum building setback or one percent of the tower height. We took a lot of discussion on this, we were thinking more of an and than a or, right?
The exact language is whichever is larger.
Whichever is larger.
And if there's minimum built setbacks, it could be five.
Yeah.
This is the exact.
Okay, as long as it's whichever is larger, I'm okay.
But that is.
Well, that's actually written down, just on the slide, but it's in the code.
Yeah, sorry, this is just an excerpt excerpt for our conversation, but yeah, the actual code has a different language.
And in the other zones, everybody's okay with what you're saying?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
So I don't have any specific concerns to the prioritization table. I think that was fairly well done. And I don't have any very clear concerns about some of the specific setback language, but I mean, I am gonna vote no on this recommendation ultimately because I intend to write a minority report about it. And I just feel like this whole process is not, it included a stakeholders works working group. And I just think we did not do the appropriate job of listening to those folks and we have taken next to no none of their requests into consideration in this, and that's largely come from the consultant recommending to us to not do that and I just think overall, there's a large number of things that are yet unaddressed, but it's, we've we've already discussed many of them and we've gotten a pushback that that they're just not willing to address them directly in writing, so we're just gonna have to make a minority report.
Thank you. Next on the list?
Uh, that's actually everything that we had talked about, you want me to bring back unless you have anything else that you would like to address before I make those changes to the draft and bring that back to you. We can go over that in the next work session and I will prepare a possible motion for you slash recommendation. We don't have to go with that if there are more things that come up, but it'll be an option.
Do you guys have anything else you want to have addressed in one more work session? Okay, we'll look forward to that.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Right, well, um, that was a bit quicker than I thought we were gonna get to, which is great, and there's no calling anti back, he's right left in the room, so. With that, we will be moving on to other business, which would be staff updates.
So I have a couple of staff updates. The first one is just on staffing, we are still in the midst of trying to hire. It is not necessarily the easiest thing to do these days, so associate planner position will have to actually be renoticed.
Oh, no.
Yeah. And but we are looking for interviews for the agricultural planning manager or program manager, so hopefully by the end of this month, we'll have more updates for staffing with you for you than the other point of interest that the planning commission may want to know is that at four o'clock last Friday, the county received the signed incidental take permit from US Fish and Wildlife for the Habitat Conservation Plan. So that is both the record of decision on the environmental impact statement and the approval of the HCP, so we have the permit. So that's step one with from US Fish and Wildlife, step two will be to move those inventory premises forward for the board, they are still in legal review. And making sure that all of the I's are dotted and T's are crossed to make sure that we're meeting the intent of the incidental take permit that was issued.
What county action was the take permit issued, sir?
So the county didn't make it perform an action for the take permit, US Fish and Wildlife. So we created a habitat conservation plan upon which was reviewed and.
What is the habitat conservation plan applied to?
Oh, I'm sorry, so the habitat conservation plan is for six listed species, the three three of the four listed, Mazzama pocket gopher subspecies, the Taylor Turner spot butterfly, the Oregon spotted frog and the Oregon vespers sparrow, which is a proposed listed species. And that will the plan will allow the county to issue permits at a level for developers and developments impacting their habitat without going to the federal government.
When when do you think would be possible to start using this program?
So the proposed time tentative line timeline at this point is to bring the information forward to the board and to have a public hearing in October and the HCP to be effective January one of twenty twenty three.
Great. You guys worry, start buying that plan.
The conservation land system is being purchased, yes, to the best part of.
All right, so I want to go back to the staff or the staffing issue.
Staffing.
I know in the past, because I've been a part of it a couple of times, the commissioners have decided to have interview boards with, one with community members, one with staff and one with commissioners. Yeah. I think especially when looking at hiring somebody that's going to be program, would be a good idea to get some aim oriented people suggested.
Right, so hiring acts are protocol under the H, under our HR order. Are within that particular interview panel will be somebody within the division will be an HR person will be somebody from WSU extension and from the commissioner's office.
And I'll just brag, I was on panel.
Beautiful.
You were talking about the WS extension center and people all that are coming off that campus.
Uh, no, Stephen Ramos, director of the Thirson County WSC extension, his his office. Right, this particular, because WS extension does fall under the director of WS, with the director of C Fed. We have a direct connection with Stephen Ramos, who is the director of the agricultural programs.
They get space from us, yeah.
Yes, they do.
No, just.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody have any other questions for staff? All right, okay, well, let's move on to calendars then. Our next meeting would be July fourteenth, where we are going to have our joint dinner with the board of county commissioners down at Mercado, is everybody, is anybody planning on not being able to make it? Can you tell us who else is gonna be there besides B O C C and probably you and Josh Romero?
That's the group.
That's it? All right, we're not gonna have Dina there?
And can you send out the information on the address from?
Yeah, I'll make sure that's.
I've never been there.
Okay, for July twentieth meeting, we're tentatively gonna be talking about the shoreline master program, wireless code updates, emergency housing ordinance, and maybe move into the ag critical areas ordinance amendment. Is there anybody that doesn't think they will be able to attend that meeting? Looks like we should have everybody there, and then next meeting after that would be August third, where we might still be doing shoreline master program and we'll be working on eighteen AGC O amendments. Anybody planning on missing August third? Well, it looks like we'll have everybody from the next three meetings. With that, we'll move on to good of the work. Did you get something for good of work?
Yeah, just something because it hasn't come up for a while, although we've talked about it, and that's planning commission emails. So. Just to, just to make sure that stays on the.
A little bit more there.
Talking about.
They question.
Actual county emails for planning commission.
Right, and we have the Gino command and the board office denied it.
Okay. So.
County commissioner said not to do it?
It came down from the county manager's office.
From the county manager.
So the other one that hasn't come up pretty long. And I did get one time is a wifi password.
Oh, so the, right, so county has actually just changed its wifi here in the building, and if you bring in a wifi enabled device, it should automatically connect to county guest wifi, and you'll just have to tell it to go ahead and accept the terms and conditions.
That's where.
There's no password.
It's just.
That is what IT is telling you. So if somebody wants to try it out, then let me know.
Yeah, so the whole conspiracy out here or in the parking lot can use it and get your access to the internet.
If it goes that far.
Anybody else have anything, or good in the order?
Um, I just had one question about the dinner, if we could get like a cost estimate for it, because I will need to reverse counting under public ethics laws.
It is a charge to, we we already take care of it, so.
I know, but I need to.
Oh.
I need to pay it a fair market value, otherwise I'm violating it.
Oh, because you're in ecology, right? Yep, 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 I remember those things. I will do that.
Eight, time of the. Six thirty?
Six thirty. Six seconds.
Six thirty. Mercado is just right downtown. Cross from the forward, yeah, right, cross from the forward park.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, does anybody on Zoom have anything for the good of the order?
No.
Okay, well, having no further business, this meeting is adjourned.